Good morning. If you would, please find your seats and take a moment to silence your cellphones, make sure they're on vibrate so that we don't interrupt the meeting. We have Brother Fred Rogers with us today, he's going to open our meeting for us. Brother Fred, if you'll come forward, please, sir.
Father, we're thankful for your goodness. We thank you, Lord, for this day you've given us to rejoice and be glad in. We thank you, Lord, for this county. Thank you for the leadership of this county. And we, Lord, today would ask that you would give them the wisdom of Solomon, Lord, as they go about the business of running our county to help us to grow and to be a safe place to live in. We thank you now for your promised blessing, and you said if we would gather in your name, you'd be there. So, Lord, we know you're here among us today. Blessed, we pray, in the wonderful name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Mr. Salter, would you lead us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes for the February 27, 2014 regular meeting. I move approval without objection. Here none. They are approved. We'll begin on my right. Commissioner Salter, any additions to today's?
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole?
No additions.
Commissioner Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, I do need to add one item, as I've received a proposal from HOK regarding the review of the additional sites that we'll be doing in the next two weeks, primarily in the East Milton area, to have the architects be able to look at those sites and make some evaluations of the placement of the building. If I could add that to the administrative agenda.
Let's make that item 10. Thank you. On the admin. Ms. Jones? Mr. Blalock? Ms. Bell? Okay. We approve the agenda. We have a proclamation this morning. Sheriff Hall, are you with us?
I am.
There he is. Thank you, sir. You'll come forward to the podium out there, please, sir. We'd like to read the proclamation, then we'll do the presentation. "County of Santa Rosa Proclamation. Whereas Santa Rosa County's future depends on nurturing the healthy development of our children currently living, growing, and learning within our communities, and whereas research shows that safe and nurturing relationships and stimulating the stable environment improve brain development and child well-being, while neglectful or abusive experiences in unstable and stressful environments increase the odds of poor childhood outcomes. And whereas, the abuse and neglect of children can cause severe, costly, and lifelong problems affecting all society, including physical and mental health problems, school failure, and criminal behavior, and whereas individuals, businesses, schools, and faith-based and community organizations must make children the top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. And whereas, during the month of April, the Santa Rosa County Kids' House, along with the public and private sector agencies, childcare professionals, child advocates, and residents, will be increasing public awareness of child abuse prevention, healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and the types of concrete support families need within their communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners do hereby call upon all citizens to observe the month of April 2004 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Santa Rosa County, and to increase their participation in an effort to prevent child abuse and neglect hereby strengthening the communities we live in for now and for the future generations passed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners this 27th day of March 2014." And it is my pleasure to sign that. And Sheriff, if you'll come up here, we'd be glad to present it.
Let me say a few words, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you all for the proclamation. This Child Abuse Prevention Month, of course, is a time that we realize and recognize that this is a problem. Abuse of children is something that we deal with on a regular basis, and there's so many cases that will literally break your heart. We feel, and we know, because of the Santa Rosa Kids' House and us addressing these problems, as a community, we're making a difference. This awareness helps us make a difference. There's more people coming forward and saying, "You're not going to continue to abuse my stepchild, or in a lot of cases, my child, because I know that there's help out there. There's someone that cares. Not only do I care about my kid, but in a lot of cases, they don't, but there's someone that can make a difference." And because of the Kids' House and the way it's run, and the hope that we give people, and the difference that we're making in children's lives after they become victims of abuse, we're making a difference. But we appreciate the proclamation. I have some board members with the Kids' House, and as you all know, for the most part, it's a community-supported facility organization, and the outpouring and the help that the community gives us is phenomenal. And we have a board that is also phenomenal. And we have with us today Ms. Liz Simmons, Margaret Porter, Sandy O'Hara, Ed Carson, Carol Lutz, Michelle Tucker, Tony Alexander, Adair Cotton, and Ms. Paula Lou Maples. That's some of the ones that works on the Board of Directors at the Kids' House and helps with the fundraisers. But I'd like for each of them, and we got a little pendant here that, in recognition of Child Abuse Month, we'd ask you, every opportunity you get, to wear that on your lapel, and of course, if someone asks you what it is, you can certainly tell them. It's all about recognition of a Child Prevention Month. And do we have something else? Ms. Paula Lou, would you like to come? We won't take up much more of your time. I know you all got a full agenda today. But we're so thankful for the support we get from the community, and we're so thankful that with the community's help, that we are making a difference in the lives of our kids. We're putting a lot of people in jail that abuse kids, and we're helping those victims to overcome that tragedy. It's getting pretty windy today, so you all be careful with us. So, thank you all very much. And we're ready for victory.
I think we're going to need to join you guys down there. Yeah.
Did everybody get a candy bag? Because we've got more left.
Thank you. It's very small pay for folks that dedicate their time and efforts to causes like this. This one is near and dear to my heart, and I think to every parent and grandparent on planet Earth, I hope. Sheriff, we didn't get you your presentation. Next is Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, no changes.
Thank you, sir. Administrative Committee is next. Item number one is recommend issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity, COPCN, for the operation of emergency air ambulance transportation services to Rocky Mountain Holdings LLC doing businesses, Air Methods Corporation. And I move approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number two is discussion of real property purchase agreement with Milton Crossings LLC for approximately 22-acre parcel on US 90 proposed judicial facility. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is that agreement. We've kind of gone over a number of times. It includes, as the county attorney noted to you yesterday and at the meeting Monday, I believe, that the county has the full option to negate the agreement any time prior to November 21st, which is two weeks after the general election this year. I don't think any other questions. Angie would be really better to speak.
Any other comments from the board? Yes, sir. Turn the light on. Push a button there, and you get the red light.
Got it. There we go. I'm John Monroe, 2929 Blackshear Avenue, Pensacola, Florida. I'm with Emmanuel Shepherd &amp; Condon. I'm here representing Milton Crossings. Wanted to speak just a minute to it. Understand that from the meeting on Monday, there may have been a little concern, or confusion, or some misunderstanding maybe about Milton Crossings' involvement, how they got in this, what are they doing. There was a letter that was supplied by Brian Di Maria to the Commissioners yesterday, and hopefully that answered a lot of the questions. If not, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. What I wanted to bring to your attention is Milton Crossings was brought in at the request of Charter Bank. Charter Bank submitted the proposal that was accepted by the county. And Milton Crossings' offer is based on that proposal, and it's no more, no less. In fact, I think the contract price was actually developed by staff from the proposal that was submitted by Charter Bank. And the reason that Milton Crossings were brought in, and Milton Crossings consists of Brian Di Maria and Don Yaley. You may recognize the name, Don Yaley. He's a civil engineer, been around for many, many years here, involved in many projects, very familiar with this type of development work. They were brought in at the request of Charter Bank because a number of questions were coming back to Charter on the proposal that dealt with development-type, engineering-type questions. And Charter is not in the business of doing that. So, they brought in Brian for the development portion, and Don Yaley for the engineering. And as with most banks, they don't want to sell their REO property piecemeal. They'd like to sell it in bulk. And so, they struck a deal with Milton Crossings for Milton Crossings to acquire the whole piece of property. They still are honoring, Milton Crossings is, are honoring the proposal terms. So, there's really no difference to the county. It just allows the bank to unload, if you will, or get rid of the whole piece of property at one time, and Milton Crossings will be responsible for developing or guiding the development for the balance of the property in consistent with the county codes. I also want to point out that, quite frankly, this proposed contract gives the county an outstanding opportunity to tie up the property, keep it off the market until November 21st of this year, basically at no cost to the county. It's a free look, if you want to call it that, and gives the county plenty of opportunity to look at other sites, which, you know, we understand, not necessarily in favor of, obviously from my client standpoint, but we appreciate the opportunity that you've given them to make the proposal and understand the realities of needing to look and find the best site for the county. But again, this is an outstanding opportunity to take the property off the market, tie it up, no money to the county, and if you find another site, you cancel it. You have until November 21st to do so. And we would just, you know, request that you would give it your full consideration. Can I answer any questions for you?
Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Monroe, for being here this morning. I appreciate your visit over here and explanation. I did review the letter from Milton Crossings, or I'm sorry, Quality Investments, Brian Di Maria, and you've really answered all of my questions. I just want to clarify for everyone involved. The original proposal by Charter Bank has not changed in any material way, or immaterial way for that matter, with regard to the county. The county, the price the county is paying, everything else, is exactly the same as the original proposal from Charter.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Cole?
Thank you. To the Chair, Mr. Monroe. And if we come to a conclusion that we feel this is the property that we are interested in, after due diligence, through an appraisal, we find the property appraises it less than the contracted price, we still have the ability to negotiate the price. We're not locked in at the price.
Yes, sir. That is true. You could cancel the contract. With that leverage, you can certainly negotiate any provisions.
Okay. Thank you.
But I would point out, though, that the proposal was based on your own county property appraisers.
Yes, but we have not at this point had an appraisal.
Right. That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'm like the rest of them. Mr. Monroe, we appreciate you being here and helping clear up some of the questions that a lot of people have. So, we appreciate you being here today.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you very much for your time. We have several members of the public that appear to wish to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Name and address, please, ma'am, for the record.
Ruth Dupont Esser, 4371 Maryland Court, Gulf Breeze, Florida. My first question is, is there any excuse why we have to have Mr. Di Maria involved in this by any means? Why can't we simply buy this land from the bank if we're going to buy it and save whatever dollars we can? My second question is, why are we paying more than half of the $2,500,000-plus change that the bank was requesting for it? The next question is, why can Mr. Di Maria get involved in this, unlock this piece of property with paperwork, no money forward, and have more rights than we have to step away from it, of which he has rights till January of 2015, and we only have rights till November of 2014? But above that, I've been in land development for years. Santa Rosa County residents are not being represented in this. If I were the employer of a person coming with this land deal, I would fire that person. This land deal also has in it the rights for both pieces of property to cajun in development costs, which means the first developer has to deal with the cost of the turn lanes, which are approximately $250,000 apiece. We need two of them. That's a half million dollars. We have to build the retention pond. Retention ponds aren't cheap. Everyone knows this. They get the rights to then use our retention pond. Their land value is going to go through the roof the minute we put our courthouse on our 22 acres. And so, I just feel like the deal is being framed upside down for someone other than the county residents, because the person buying that, keeping that second piece, does nothing but grossly profit at our cost, at our tax dollars. So, why can we not renegotiate this deal to state that if they want to have this 44-acre piece with us coming in and buying 22 acres, that they will assume all costs of turn lanes, retention pond, and that they will take on their shoulders the deal that we're taking on ours, giving us the better perspective and the better position in this land deal? I just don't feel that we're being represented in it. I feel that we're being thrown under the bus with it. I feel that we have been entertained but not listened to. I feel that we have been brought up here and shown all kinds of sights where no one had an intention of ever listening to us. I feel that this land deal was going on in November of last year, which there's documentation on. And yet, here we are, being introduced to it, and it's being pushed along, and it's being promised, and all we're getting is the right to vote no at the end of the year, of which I can promise you that the citizens of Santa Rosa County will vote no. And the problem with that is, once again, we're going to end up with no courthouse, which we need so badly. And what's going to happen is eventually the state will come into this situation and say, "You have to build a courthouse," of which we would have done if we'd have just got a fair deal on a table that we felt right about. The citizens of Santa Rosa County are very intelligent, they're very caring, and they very much want a courthouse, but they want a clean deal for a courthouse. So, please, I ask, represent us. Represent the citizens with all the pieces of these contracts. And that's all I ask. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to address a couple of things. The shared infrastructure provisions of the contract contemplate possible negotiations between the county and the adjacent property owner to develop a regional stormwater utility. There is no requirement that the county build a stormwater pond and then offer that capacity to the adjacent property owner. It makes sense if they're going to develop property adjacent to this site, and the county's going to develop this site, that we could share the costs on a regional stormwater pond. But I assure you, there is no way that I would ever support the county building a pond, a stormwater facility, and then offering it for free to an adjacent developer. But if you can partner up on a regional stormwater utility, then that makes sense. Saves the county money.
Excuse me. Turn the light on.
It does make sense, but my request to that would be that we in contract include that they will reimburse us funds that we spend in order, or a portion of, at least 50% of the cost to put in the turn lanes, to put in the retention pond. Just negotiate on our behalf and put that in the contract, that when you do connect into this retention pond, that you will reimburse us so many dollars, and that when you use this turn lane, which they would need to do, because it makes no sense to put multiple turn lanes on 90, that you will reimburse us half. Just negotiate on our behalf, is what I ask. Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cantu? Give us your name and address, please, ma'am, for the record, and let's stick to the topic at hand. We're talking about the purchase of the Milton Crossings LLC property, about 22 acres on 90. There you are.
My name is Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. This is the most confusing, I think, I've ever seen here, and there's been a lot of confusing deals that went on. I think it's appropriate, if the county wants to build something that's going to cost in the neighborhood of $30 million, that it present the proposal to the people of the county and let us know exactly what we're planning on doing, how much it's going to cost us, how it's going to affect us, and that's not being done. It's too confusing. Just the questions that the last speaker presented to me shows that it's too confusing. Are there any proposed plans that are available for the voters of Santa Rosa County to look at and say, "Yes, I would like to have this," or "No, I don't want this. This costs too much money. It's too elaborate," or whatever? I haven't seen any plans. Are there any available?
Yes, ma'am. We have an architect working on plans, and if you notice, we added an item, administrative item number 10, to today's agenda, which will be to discuss expanding the contract to evaluate. Hunter, you want to make sure you keep me on track here, but...
Ms. Cantu, the project envisions that once the board decides on a site, then it will be approximately, preliminary drawings will be made, the cost estimates will be prepared, there'll be schematics, there'll be inclusion of all the cost and what it's to look like once we determine what the site is. That's the portion that we're going to be dealing with later on that Chairman Melvin mentioned is every time that we, it just costs us money to have the architect with these particular sites. But we've got, at some point, we've got to narrow the site down to where we're going to put it, and that way, they'll put the full amount of due diligence in developing the cost and what the project will look like.
And are these proposed, are these proposed plans going to be presented to the voters of Santa Rosa County?
Absolutely.
How?
There'll be, the whole campaign, there'll be multiple meetings, we'll be here, we'll go into the different communities. I mean, there'll be a public education portion of the sales tax vote, and I would expect that to be done this summer, assuming that we get a site selected and the board's ready to move forward.
But this has dragged on for months and years, and the voters of Santa Rosa County at some point have to get tired of it, and they risk not coming in when it's important. In this particular day that you all make a decision about what's going to be done, the voters of Santa Rosa County have already said, "You know, I give up. I don't know what's going on." And they don't, they're not able to take time off from work, for instance, to come and visit all the meetings that are going on. It's not fair to the voters of Santa Rosa County that something like this be dragged on forever and ever and ever until they become disinterested or have no idea what to do and when.
Commissioner Salter?
Ms. Cantu, I totally agree with you. This is the most confusing thing I've ever tried to deal with in my 14 years in office.
Thank you.
And the reason it's so confusing is because the four of us had a plan, we deviated from the plan, and now we're bringing all these other pieces of property in that didn't make it through the process. I talk to people all the time who say, "Don, we elected you gentlemen as county commissioners. You should go and do your job and move forward with getting a courthouse built." But I think because there've been so many people telling so many different stories about what it is and what it isn't, I think people are so confused, they just ready about to scrap the whole thing. So, we've got to stay focused. We've got to make a decision. We've got to move forward. We've got to quit changing things, and we've got to put something out there for the people to understand. Thank you.
But when I hear, "Let's buy this piece of property, because then this piece of property is going to go higher in value," not thinking about what's right for the citizens of Santa Rosa County and making a courthouse that's going to be able for, that's going to make it possible for them to go in an easier way to the courthouse when they need to, that, to me, is the problem. Rather than thinking about the voters of Santa Rosa County, thinking about what you're going to do to the value of property here, there, or wherever. And I know that there are a lot of pieces of property that the county owns, that they've owned for a long period of time. When the county owns property, nobody pays taxes on it. You have a lot of property that you could put a judicial center on. You don't have to go out and buy other property. Yes, it may be possible for you to get this property at a good deal now, but the voters of Santa Rosa County would then continue to pay taxes on that rather than collecting taxes for that property.
Mr. Chairman, one more comment, then I'll shut up.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Most of the property we own, we acquired it for economic development, to bring in businesses, industry, and create jobs. When we bought that property, it went off the tax roll. When we bring that industry in, like the big Hackney Corporation over in, uh, the industrial park, they pay a lot more taxes than any, uh, anybody else ever will, uh, as, like a residential. So when we buy that property, it comes off the roll for a brief period of time, we bring in industry, hopefully, and they pay a lot of taxes. So it's not like nobody's going to pay taxes on it.
That's what you hope happens. But i- in reality, what has been happening is, you haven't been bringing that much business into Santa Rosa County.
It's called a recession, and we're just getting out of it.
Now, Ms. Cantu...
But again, but that's what you want to do, it's, it's just not happening.
Ms. Cantu, uh, I'd like to remind you, please, uh, I would like you to limit your, your comments to this particular piece of property, not the general, not the general discussion. The general discussion would just, it, this is not, this item is to discuss this particular piece of property, Milton Crossings LLC, and I certainly appreciate your comments, but just try to keep them on point as to this particular piece of property. And I understand you're, supporting your point with these other comments, but, uh, don't get too far afield on it, just stick to this piece of property, if you would, please, ma'am.
I appreciate that, however, that's part of the problem that I'm addressing, because we have all of these, this other property that hasn't been, uh, treated the way that, you know, as, as voters of Santa Rosa County, we were told, "I'm going to bring some industry in here."
I understand.[705.66][705.66](APPLAUSE).
How much is actually needed? Do we need 22 acres, or is that going to be twice what we need to, to put a building Again, I reiterate that it has been so confusing, the, the voters of Santa Rosa County need a proposal that makes sense, telling them how much it's going to cost them if we build this kind of judicial center, wherever, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.[744.82][744.82](APPLAUSE).
Morning, gentlemen. The red light's still on. Margaret Peggy Smith, 6758 Madison Street, Milton. Um, I have a letter from Main Street Milton. I am a member of the board, as are three other members here. Dear Santa Rosa County Commissioners, the Main Street Milton Board of Directors is well aware that the difficult decision that you have before you and the many options for building a new county judicial facility, this has long been an issue in need of a resolution, and we commend you for your efforts to find a suitable solution. In light of recent discussions occurring, we feel it is prudent to share our official position with you. We do so with the hope that it will show our support for a courthouse solution that will meet both the current and future needs of the citizens. Main Street Milton recognizes that many moving parts to this decision and the potential results implicit in each of the different scenarios. We strongly feel that the selection of a site for the courthouse should be based on meeting the needs of greatest percentage of our citizens by being centrally located. We also feel that current infrastructure, especially pertaining to multiple land roads, should reach the site from several directions. Road building is expensive. As you recognize, the cost of building a new courthouse includes much more than just the land itself. Greater costs can be found in all other infrastructure required to reach and support such a facility. Although not tied to a particular piece of land, Main Street Milton agrees that your selection of a site on Highway 90 in the Milton P. Ridge area does indeed meet the needs of the greatest number of Santa Rosa County citizens. Four-lane roads provide access from the population centers of Navarre, Gulf Breeze, Pace, and Milton. This infrastructure is already paid for and in place. Land is also available in the amount of acreage and needed, as indicated by county staff, not only for the new facility, but for future building expansion and parking needs. It just makes sense, only for the new facility, it just makes sense to not only plan for our current needs, but also for the future. Thank you for trying to do just that. We appreciate your attempt to locate the courthouse based on multiple criteria, including a site best accessible to a majority of citizens, current and future infrastructure needs, land availability, and costs. Although we recognize in doing so, you will not be able to please everyone, you will, however, be doing your job, using sound criteria and information to select the best courthouse location you can. Sincerely, Sammy Carroll, President. Questions, gentlemen?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Would you leave a copy with the...
I will provide you, yes.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Bill Wiggins, and I live at 6049 Mayberry Lane, here in Milton. I think you made a remark a little while ago, Commissioner Salters, that the reason that this thing was in such a turmoil right now was because different people was going different ways, is that correct?
I said, "There are different, so many people out there telling different stories, uh, some of them are accurate and some not."
Yes, sir. Let me, let, let, let you educate me here on something, and let me digress here for just a minute, if I might. If I recall correctly, and I stand correctly, corrected if I'm wrong, we had five pieces of property, I believe, on Avalon Boulevard, is that correct? That we chose that those were the, the places we wanted to take a look at, is that right or is that wrong?
Mr. Chairman, the way I remember it, there were three pieces of property on Avalon, then the one on Highway 90.
No, there was no, nothing in Highway 90 when we first chose the, the five pieces of property. Now, you went back and you said, "Let's cull this down to two." On the day, if I recall correctly, and this old mind of mine, you know, is not real good at recalling, but on the day that you were, you culled it to two pieces of property, on the day that you were supposed to choose from those two pieces of property, if I'm not mistaken, and you can correct me, you made a motion to hold off on it because of the Highway 90 property has shown its ugly face, is that correct? So you're, you're blaming other people for this, but you're the one that got it started, if I'm not mistaken.
Let me answer your question, that's not accurate. I'd always, we'd always talked about Highway 90. It wasn't the last day, that's been in the mix from day one.
Highway 90 property has been in, in the mix from day one?
I'm kind of like you, I'm getting older, but the best I remember.
I didn't know that. I thought, uh, the, the last day that, that we were going to choose between the two pieces of property on Avalon, that you made the motion to hold off because there was a piece on Highway 90 you wanted to look at.
If I remember correctly, somewhere along the way, I recommended we make sure we look at the piece on Highway 90, so we could have two different locations to look at, one being Avalon and one being Highway 90.
Commissioner...
So actually, you know, when...
Just one, Commissioner Salt, uh, Commissioner Cole wants to make a comment.
Mr. Chairman, through the, through the chair to Mr. Walker, could we please ask staff to just get the map from the original, when we started, you know, when we put out the RFP, that's a simple way to take it, actually, Commissioner Salters, you are wrong, there was two on 90, not just one.
That's my memory, that we started with five, that three of them were on, was it...
We received six proposals, uh, we went through the process, there were, there were the three on Avalon, I believe, they ended up being, uh, three on 90. Um, they, they were, they were shortlisted, if I recall, to four, there were the, the three still on Avalon, and then the one site, uh, that's the Charter Bank site, uh, now, or the, the Milton Crossing site now, so there were the four, and then that went to the two.
That's correct.
And then, which was the 90 and the, uh, Avalon, the JDL, uh, piece, uh, on Avalon, and then you selected the, the 90 site. So that's where it went, that was the process we went through, and it's been, and Ms. Cantu's right, we started this process, in fact, a year ago, when we started with, uh, scheduling a public hearing and going through the whole process, and the whole process has been geared towards selecting a site. So, Mr. Wiggins, we got six proposals, written proposals, with prices, and, and, uh, I believe those were due in, in November, and then the, the board's been working down through that list to this date. So nothing's been added, uh, or anything else, other than these Milton sites that we're, we're going to look at.
I think at the time, there was, when we threw this into the mix, at the time, there was two people who wanted it on Avalon, and two that wanted it on Highway 90. One of them flip-flopped from Avalon to Highway 90. I'm wondering why this happened? I mean, if you believe in something strong enough, you need to stick by your word.
Mr. Wiggins, that was me that moved from Avalon to 90. I favored the Avalon site initially. There are four of us on this board, and there were four of us voting on a site. If we would have had a two-two split vote, there would be no moving forward on a courthouse. Primary above all is getting a new judicial facility built. My concern was having it built in a location that was suitable for the next 75 years for the county. I believe either site, the 90 or the Avalon site, would, would, would satisfy that need. I preferred the Avalon site, but in the interest of moving forward, moved my support to the 90 site.
Why did you have to change yours? Why didn't you let Mr. Salt or, or Mr. Cole change theirs? So you, that's what I want to know.
They had already spoken, and I could see...
Ah, yeah, mhm.
Let me speak, please. They had already spoken, and I saw the direction that the conversation was taking. So it, it's, sometimes you have to, you have to...
I understand.
...change positions to be able to move forward.
I understand.
Otherwise, in 10 years, we'll still be talking about getting a new courthouse.
I understand. Let me just say this, if I might, ask the question. What is the Holy Grail of this property on Highway 90? Why is it such a part of a Holy Grail that this is the property in Santa Rosa County, with all the pieces of property that people is trying to give to you, and you're going to pay somewhere around $64,000 an acre, when the Santa Rosa County School Board just bought some property not too far from that, if I recall correctly, for 12, $10,000 or $12,000 an acre? What's the difference? Why is it every time this commission starts to buy something, the property value immediately goes up? It doesn't make sense to me.[1363.51][1363.51](APPLAUSE). Maybe you can explain it to me, you're a lawyer, explain that to me, if you will, please, sir?
Mr. Wiggins, we put out a request for proposal, we got six proposals back. They had their price on there, those proposals were vetted through this board, and we arrived at one piece of property, and that's where we are today.
Now, we have one commissioner here that says he is all for East Milton. Is that correct?
I guess, I guess in your viewing of me, you're asking me, I've been for the last 12 years proposing East Milton. At this point, at this point, I believe it's, uh, the option of this board, and, and what we should do as, as Americans, give the choice to the citizens. We've picked a piece on Highway 90 as a board, we've found substantial input to put Highway 90, or, uh, East Milton back on. In the past, I have not had any board support to do so. Currently, there is board support, so I made the motion, and it, it was seconded by Commissioner Lynch, to give the citizens the option where they want to build it. So we're, we're listening to the citizens of Santa Rosa County, we're doing it the American way, we're giving the citizens the ability to choose one of two locations, and, well, we haven't narrowed it down in East Milton yet, we're in the process of looking at Cotton's property, or, uh, the property we own, possibly Senator Clary, a piece that he's involved with. Uh, we can narrow that down to one, and at, and at point, come up with, uh, an East Milton location and a Highway 90 location, that we let the citizens of Santa Rosa County have their choice. Where do, where does the majority of citizens feel that this, uh, new judicial center should be built? I, I don't see anything un-American, or the way we shouldn't be conducting ourselves in, in that proposal.
Well, I've heard you say several times that you have been for this property all along in East Milton. Uh, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's public record.
It, it is correct.
Yes, sir.
Then can I expect you today to make a motion to this board for, to take the Highway 90 property off the table today?
That motion...
Can I expect you to make that motion today, sir?
Well, you can expect...
Since you're all for Milton, let's, let's see if you'll do that.
You can expect what you'd like to expect, but what you're asking me to do is not take the Highway 90 property off the proposal, you're asking me to take away the ability of Santa Rosa County citizens to exercise their right to vote, is what you're asking me to do.
You know, I, I'd just like to see people...
And I refuse to do so.
Okay, all right. Put their money where their mouth is. If you're for something, you need to, uh, you need to stand up. That's your, that's your district, sir. East Milton is one of the poorest districts in this county, and if they ever needed a shot in the arm, East Milton needs it. It needs some economic development. As the saying goes, "You build it and they will come," you'll get it. I'd like to see you today put that motion on the floor here, that, uh, we will take the Highway 90 property off the table today. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins.[1592.83][1592.83](APPLAUSE). Name, name and address for the record, and I...
Elaine McDaniel, 1716 St. Mary's Bay Drive, Dickerson City.
I'm sorry?
(LAUGHING).
Dixon City?
Dickerson City.
Dickerson City, okay.
I got my mail from Milton, 32583. Uh, I, I gave this information to a bunch of you gentlemen, some of you were here before and some of you were not. I'm just an old retired math teacher. So I look at the facts and the logic of it, and what I did before, I don't have it with me this morning, I just came because I heard it on the news y'all were meeting. But if you take a map of the, of Santa Rosa County and find the centroid, which would be the balance point, I did it, uh, on the computer with a set of infinite points, but if you do that, like on this checkbook, it's the balance point, like if you put it on, uh, I'm a little nervous and can't make it do it, but you can imagine it would balance.
We understand your point, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you look at Santa Rosa County, we've got a hole in it, so if I tore off this kind of, it would shift over that way. Now, what I did with the, and I know this isn't the, the end of what I'm going to do with it, but to start with, I did that, and you'd end up with the balance point out at the east end of runway, up at White and Field. Now, you know that and where you want to put it, because that's now where all the people live. So what I did, I didn't have a, um, a current, uh, census records, so I went to the office down here and got the population, the number of registered voters in each district, and then I did the same thing by weighting it, just like, once you got this balanced, if you put some coins on here, it's going to tilt it a little bit, the balance point. So you just imagine, if you put, now, I did it mathematically, but if you can imagine, if you stacked some coins, say, a penny to represent 500 people every, at, in each district, that's going to shift that a little bit. So the balance point for the population center ends up very close to the interstate out here, where Garson Point intersects it, just a little bit south of there. Now, what that did not consider, I'm thinking, well, the, the registered voters are going to be mostly the people using the courthouse, but what I didn't consider was all the people from the jail. Now, you take that point, just if you imagine the, I wish I had my, my, my map here to do it with, but if you imagine that point just south of the interstate on Garson Point Road, and you put a few more pennies where the jail is, that's going to shift that just a little bit toward the jail. Now, where does that put it? Darn close to that property on 87 near the interstate. Now, I'm just saying, that's the, I know everybody's talking about emotions here and, uh, let, and I still say, "Let the people vote," but I say, "A lot of it's going to be swayed by, if that's the population center..." if that's the population center, you're going to have more people voting anyway to put it in that direction. But I just wanted to get that logic end of it, that's how I think, not the emotional end, but the logical end. And it doesn't make sense to me. If you tried to balance the thing on the pencil point at that place up on 90, they wouldn't even balance. It'd tip over like this. So, I mean, just throwing a little logic into it, all in a few facts.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, we appreciate your input. Name and address, please, ma'am, for the record.
Sharon Glass, 5661 Wind Run Place, Pace, Florida. Um, I have a couple of questions. Do you commissioners work for We the People?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
You do? Okay, um, Mr. Cole has stated several times that the people are not involved, and encouraged us to get involved, and now we are involved, and, uh, now Mr. Salter thinks we're all confusing the issue. And so, I just don't know, I did not understand, I was totally set back when Mr. Salter said that the four of you need to do your job, and it appeared to me, sitting here, that you needed to do your job without We the People. And so, actually, I thought we had five commissioners, and I do know and respect highly that Mr. Williamson is sick, but when you say four, we actually have five, and unfortunately, Pace is not being represented right now because Mr. Williamson is sick, and I'm not, I'm not downing him or anything that's going on there. I highly respect all of you commissioners. But we had a lady that came up here, I see some faces here that have not been here before because the people are getting involved, but there's one issue. This week, I have taken 10 hours personal leave because I have to take a half a day, I work a half a day, and because your meetings are at nine o'clock on Monday morning and nine o'clock on Thursday morning, I would like to see the meeting that comes up in two weeks, which is so important, it's all about the East Milton property. I would like for you to arrange a night meeting, give us plenty of notice of when it will be, so we can get the people here. I'm, I mentioned this to Mr. Melvin, and he said, "Well, it does require some overtime." Well, We the People are willing to pay the overtime. Uh, I think we can arrange that for a meeting such as this, because I think that the people really need to know and understand. And I can say, if you keep the Highway 90 property on the, on the table, um, and, and I'm, I'm not going to fuss about this right now, because We the People will speak when the time comes up to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Sam Mullins, 5922 Allen Town Road. First off, I want to commend the commissioners on at least looking back at East Milton, and finally, looking back, as you said, Mr. Salter, what we originally planned on, uh, property by the jail, Judicial Boulevard. That was the reason that road was named Judicial Boulevard, and even the other day, on the presentations we saw, you know, that was one of the properties that was in the back, behind the DJJ, but not up next to the jail at Judicial Boulevard. So I want to commend y'all for at least opening that back up to be looked at, because that was what the long-term plan originally was for this county. Uh, that brings us to the Highway 90 property in Pace. One of the things that's been brought up, and, uh, I had asked the question, and I'm still not getting an answer to it, um, that property is part of the Pond Creek watershed, and we saw the renditions here, uh, on the presentation from HOK. Uh, you're talking now 22 acres, and like I said, if you build a single-story floor plant, uh, for, floor plan, footprint of a building, y'all had 180,000 square foot. That is over four acres of land. By the time you put parking, future expansion, and a holding pond, leaves very little room for any future expansion whatsoever. Now, y'all said that, "Well, we, we can go up," and y'all have even said this in your own meeting, that building up dramatically increases the cost of construction, which means that will dramatically increase the cost to the taxpayers. When we have hundreds of acres out there by the jail, you've got the property, but out of the jail, you've got the property west of that even. But given that, my thing is, I ask, do we know how big a holding pond that DEP would require for this property? And one of the commissioners said, "Oh, two or three acres." I said, "Do you know that? Have you contacted DEP?" I have not got an answer, because to me, that's a crucial part of making a decision on the Highway 90 Pace property. You've got to look at the property, determine what the water flow in the watershed is to Pond Creek there, then make a determination what kind of holding pond DEP's going to require, given the, the size of the building, the parking and everything that we saw with the HOK presentation. That's all got to be taken into consideration, because the, the construction of that holding pond's going to be crucial. Not only that, but I ask about the infrastructure, which we know we have shovel-ready property with all the infrastructure we need in East Milton. I ask about the DSL and the fiber optic cable. My understanding is we have power and sewer and water at the east, uh, at the P Ridge site, but we do not have fiber optic cable. Am I correct on that?
You said P Ridge, and I think you meant East Milton.
No, I meant P Ridge. I'm saying the Highway 90, Highway 90 site that we're talking about. Do we have fiber optic cable, commercial fiber optic cable? Because that's going to be a huge expense.
I have no idea.
Does anyone else here know? I do not believe, and I may be wrong, but I don't think that we do. So that's another consideration that needs to be taken into this property, because you have that in East Milton, by the jail. You have all of that. All right, let me ask a question. Do we have several fire hydrants and, and the ability for fire control already on the property there at, uh, Highway 90 in Pace, P Ridge? Don't know?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
That's available at East Milton site?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, I believe, you know, those questions Sam's asking are pertinent questions, so I would like to ask that the county engineer get those answers for us on both the fiber optic and the, I would be surprised on a corridor like Highway 90 if there wasn't fiber optic, but I think our county engineer can find out those answers for us pretty quick.
And also, too, I mean, along with that, we'll need to see what the cost would be to bring that, because that's going to add to the cost of that property, you know, looking at that property.
Of course, if it's, you know, if it's on the same side of 90 or not, it's, you know, okay, we can get that clarified on.
And lastly, there's been some disturbing things that have come out in the press, and I just, I want, I want to try to put them to, to bed here so that we can talk about the, the, the property itself and not the optics surrounding it. This Milton Crossroads LLC group, I believe, that has come into the mix with the charter, is one of the commissioners from Escambia County part of that group?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
I believe it was identified in this letter, and also the attorney that's here today identified the, the two partners in that group.
Okay, well, there, there were some things that were put out that I believe Wilson Robertson may be part of that, that group. I don't know if that's true or not, because if, if it is, we need to look into that, because that may be something that would, the optics doesn't look very good if that's, and I'm saying, this is something that's been put out, I don't know if it's true, I'm asking y'all, because this is part of the due diligence that we're asking.
Sam, it's not true.
It's not? Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure.
Wilson Robertson was a part-owner of one of the sites that was, I, I don't even know if it was one of the shortlisted sites on Avalon, or no, on 90. It was the, the, another site on 90.
It was not.
But it was not this property. It was one of the ones that fell out first round.
Okay. Lastly, the other thing I want to ask you is, is, on that, uh, this group, if the deal goes through with the county, is it true or not that this, uh, group would possibly end up with over $100,000 by, in their pockets by taking it over from Charter Bank and then turn around and sell it to the county? Is that true or not?
I haven't seen a contract between those two parties. I'd like to know what, uh, I think that's a very fair question. I'd like to know what they're paying per acre to the bank versus what, um, the price derived from us. I have not seen a contract between the bank and Milton Crossings as to what their agreement is.
Okay.
I don't know that anybody else has either.
These are just some questions that I think that need to be looked at and answered, and answers put out to the public, so the public can make a, you know, a, an educated decision as voters on this property. I know these are things that have been, like I said, they've been put out there, but these kind of answers, we need these kind of answers, and, uh, if these answers can't be gotten to the public in, in a timely fashion, at that point, I hope the commissioners would consider removing this property from the consideration list. Thank you.
Ruth Dupont, S4371, Maryland Court, Gulf Breeze. Um, the one thing I'd like to say is, I, I did go to Senator Clary, as many of you are aware, and I did call him and say, "Senator Clary, you have 230 acres of land here in East Milton. It's right by the interstate and 87. In your whole lifetime, this land will never go up in value. East Milton is, is not an area that has a lot of value, but if you give, uh, to us 20 acres of land for free to this county, then the change in value because of this courthouse will increase your value of your land so much that you will have given nothing away. If you will allow us then to have 20 rather than 10, so that we could take the front portion of that, turn it into eight commercial lots which we could sell, we could then cover our $2 million worth of infrastructure costs, then that would cause restaurants to come, subdivisions to be built. That's going to increase our tax base. We're going to collect more tax dollars into our county. We have dead land that we bought from Bill Pullum that's so bad, it's got a nine-acre hole in it where he was selling dirt from it, and it's such a poor piece of property that Santa Rosa County is now using it for that purpose and continuing to dig from it. We could come out on top of that. We could take that acreage, rezone it commercial, which then protects the well fields that everyone's so worried about, because we wouldn't have industrial on them. We could use those holes for retention ponds by redesigning them, then be able to sell that land in the future out there to God knows what, a Walmart, a Tuesday's, whatever, and we get our money back that we lost in that deal. We helped that whole area. One thing bleeds to the next. We create jobs, we create tax dollars, we get a pretty place. I'm not saying lock down on that site. I'm saying, please think in that manner. Think as though this were your dollars in your pocket, and you're trying to budget them, and you're trying to profit from them. And I think if we think that way, and if we look at this from that perspective, we're going to make a better decision. Right now, as it stands, Santa Rosa County residents will not profit a dime on the 90 site, but rather will have to spend a lot of their dimes. But the person buying that acreage on the side is going to come out like a fat rat. A lot of us in this building, and a lot of the citizens in Santa Rosa County, would love much more to be in that person's shoes than in the shoes we're in, because we're getting to do nothing but pay, and they're getting to do nothing but receive. So please, look at this wherever you decide that you want to put this thing. Put us on top. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Salter.
Ruth keeps talking about Charlie Clary going to give us the land. It's my understanding, there's, there's been no commitment for him to give us land. He was, he's seeking tax credits, reduce costs. Is that right, Angie?
He mentioned tax credits in a letter. I spoke with him yesterday, and he's looking at narrowing down a particular site, and then will give us more information, because he owns quite a bit of land out there. So we'll continue to, to hear whatever his, his proposal is and let you all know that.
And, and once again, anytime you buy property or anytime you build, uh, make a capital investment on property, any of the property around it's going to go up as well. Ruth talked about the Clary site is 240 acres. Well, if, if we can negotiate building a courthouse there, he's going to come out like a fat rat. So it doesn't matter if it's 90 or Highway 87, whoever owns that property around it, that value's going to increase, so it's not just limited to Highway 90. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Janet Coulter, 6953 Summit Place, Milton. Um, I have to agree with you. It sounds like the people that are selling this property or trying to give it away will mostly profit, and I didn't know when we were in the business of making money as a business. I thought we were just, um, county commissioners trying to do what's right for the citizens. Um, I'm in real estate, have been for over 26 years. I have never put in an offer for a piece of property for a client of mine without doing due diligence. My due diligence is in a formal appraisal by any means, but it does give me information. I take it from the county, I take it from recent comps, and it appears that even with the proposal of buying Highway 90, it's way above what most people are getting on Highway 90, which stinks. It sounds like it's a not above-board deal, that the only people that will profit is this LLC, and, um, it will take away, if we don't do something in East Milton, our downtown will suffer. We have a lot of attorneys, um, that live, and they do business down by our courthouse, and that's not been mentioned at all today, at all, about, um, remodeling that facility, and, and that is our, um, you know, that's our focus in this town. It's an old courthouse. I think our county has enough museums, um, we don't need to make in a museum. I think there's a way to make money, um, building a parking garage on excess property. But we will see downtown Milton a ghost town. Um, you can already see that we don't have a lot of businesses down there right now. So we're going to take away business from downtown Milton and put it on Highway 90, where they have more than enough business, more than enough traffic on a daily basis, and the frustration, and we're going to just ignore, um, our central, um, element of our downtown area. We won't grow. We will, it will not grow. And you as county commissioners, I know it's in the city, but you know we need that courthouse remodeled, and Sam had a good plan the other day, and if I was a business major, I don't know if any of you are, but sound finance, it sounds like a, a win-win situation for everybody, and especially the citizens of Santa Rosa County. And as far as bringing businesses in and around the Highway 90, where we will buy 22 acres, and they'll develop the other 22 acres, you know how hard it is right now to even have a business come in and try to put in a business going through planning and zoning. Our county commissioners make it very difficult. They will go to Alabama first, and so our thoughts, even trying to develop that into business, is going to make potential business people have a hard time trying to get it even going. I mean, even now in our county, I hear the, just the grumble of businesses just turning their backs because they say it's too hard to get things going in Santa Rosa County. And we have buildings in East Milton, my sister-in-law took pictures of empty buildings in that industrial park, empty, 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 because we have no incentives. So we're going to build something else, and, and what? Keep those buildings out there? I think that if we put it out in East Milton, the businesses will open up in those empty businesses out in the industrial park. And, um, just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. Uh, I don't know if you've noticed, but for the last couple of meetings, under economic developments, totally blank, and that's, that's not a good thing. I think we have enough economic development between Milton and the Pace area. That road is already overcrowded. Uh, I don't like the Highway 90 site, not only because of the concurrency issue, but also because of this deal issue that suddenly, uh... because of this deal issue that suddenly a new individual becomes part of it. And just to let all of you know, I am not confused. I don't believe any of the people sitting behind me are confused. People I talk to that even haven't been to any of these meetings, just read things in the newspaper, they're not confused. And I would like to clarify something that Mr. Wiggins had mentioned. He is totally correct. On the day that you were going to vote on three properties, you were willing to down to three properties, three properties on Avalon were decided on. And you were going to do studies on those three properties. Then Mr. Salter said, well, probably all of those three studies will come back with the same information. So let's just, let's just study that property on Highway 90, see what happens. Well, look what's happened, and it's not good. How did we end up with one property that wasn't even in the initial vote on that day? And also, to get it into the public record, I would like to read some information on the Highway 87, I-10 Industrial Park, which I communicated with Becky and Randy Roy. And I know we're not talking about that site today. I know we're talking about the Highway 90 site. But this is so that in two weeks, when you come back, you'll have more information to go on for those studies on those sites off of 87. This is from Randy Roy. Thanks for the opportunity to provide some comments with respect to a potential resource in locating a judicial facility within the industrial park adjacent to Navy Outlying Landing Field, Santa Rosa. In review of the Office of the Chief of Naval Operations Instruction, Air Installations Compatible Use Zones Program, Public Assembly is not considered a compatible land use within the clear zone, accident potential zone, and accident potential zones 1 and 2. The Adopted Land Development Code, Article 2, echoes this recommendation with respect to compatible land use strategies. It should be noted that our Navy instruction does not specifically call out military airport zones in its land use tables. However, the intent of the instruction is to address the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and to prevent encroachment from degrading the operational compatibility of military air installations. The gray area, and this is what I'm going to be focusing on, the gray area within both documents may lie chiefly in the interpretation slash labeling of such a facility as government services, vice public assembly. A government services facility would be permissible in a military airport zone and within an APZ 2 zone, that's the Accident Potential 2 Zone. The property in question does lie within the MAC, but is outside the Accident Potential Zone. Let's see. So with, with that information said, this location may not be conducive to public assembly venues and associated activities. Again, there is some gray area with respect to the interpretation of the facility. Article 2 and OPNAV and recommended land uses over the proposed location. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to provide some input to the proposed vision idea in finding a plausible location for a new judicial facility. And this is from Becky. All of the county-owned property in the I-10 Industrial Park is within the military airport zone. The Land Development Code does not allow public assembly uses in the MAC, but does allow government services. I asked Rhonda Royals how the building code would classify that use, and she said it would probably be a business occupancy with areas such as courtrooms classified as assembly. So to me, there is some wiggle room here with the argument that we cannot put the judicial center in the I-10 Industrial Park because of the military issues. If we can't put things in that industrial park, why did the county spend $3 million on land in that location? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and record, name and address, please, sir, for the record.
Matthew Hargraves, 7074 Milton Court, Milton. Mr. Chairman, I first want to thank Ms. Coulter for speaking a moment ago and raising the issue that I would like to raise again, and that is the businesses and property owners that will be affected by a proposed move of the courthouse from downtown Milton. I know we're here talking about the US 90 property on this agenda item, so I'm going to try to focus that, but I did appreciate her comments, and I'll probably add to them at a later meeting. First of all, question for the commission, this process, this go-around, I know there's, we've been dealing with courthouse question for decades now, but I believe last July there was a judicial workshop held by the commission, and that's kind of when this ball got rolling. Would that be accurate? Approximately July of last year? Mr. Walker, that's correct? All right. Looking at the proposed property on US 90, I did a little looking on the appraiser's website and found that that particular 44-acre parcel, of which the committee is proposing to purchase 22 acres, that 44 acres was bought by Charter Bank last August for $10,000.
Was it purchased, or was it repossessed?
It was, it was purchased at a foreclosure sale for $10,000. And to be clear, I want to confirm with the board that the current proposed purchase price is $1.4 million. Is that correct? For 22 acres of the 44?
I believe that's correct. And round numbers?
I submit that that is not a wise use of taxpayer money to purchase 22 acres on US 90 for $1.4 million, especially in light of the fact that I don't believe that during this process, starting in July of last year and going up to the present, I don't feel that the county commissioners have adequately explained to the public why downtown Milton is not an acceptable location, when we've already spent over $400,000 of taxpayer funds to obtain plans for that location. I know that now there's an agenda item, number 10, where we're going to discuss new plans from the same company, HOK. And we're going to discuss purchasing plans from them for, I assume, the US 90 location, and if East Milton gets a nod, I assume they're going to give us plans for that. How much more money are we going to spend on plans when we've already got nearly half a million in to the downtown Milton location, and no explanation from the county commission as to why downtown Milton's not even being considered? Those are my points. Thank you.
I'll make this as brief as possible. Have we formulated yet how we're going to put this to the people to vote? Has the, has the words been formulated? And in what respect will we say it on the ballot?
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At, I don't remember if it was our last meeting, last round of meetings, or the meeting, the round before that, we contemplated putting one question on the ballot. Do you support a 1% sales tax to fund the construction of a new judicial facility? And again, I'm paraphrasing, these are not, this is not the ballot language, we haven't approved it. But there's one question about the funding for the judicial center. The next question will be, do you support the location at Highway 90 in Avalon or in East Milton? The residents will decide where it goes.
So how many, how many things are you going to put on there?
Mr. Wigg, excuse me, just a moment. That was the initial request by you, and I modified that request because I complained at the time that that may have the effect of hiding the cost if you just say, will you support a penny, yes or no? And then would you support site, yes or no? And then we modified that to say that we would put the site, the cost, the penny, and the sunset date.
That's right.
And we all voted on that. So that's what it wound up being, that it would be the site, the cost of the, just for discussion purposes, the P Ridge site, X number of dollars for that site, X number of dollars for the courthouse, one penny sales tax to sunset at whatever date. And I'm pulling this date, this is not an accurate date, just an example date, say, of 2020. And then that would be yes or no. And that's what we voted on.
That's correct. The, the cost of each location would be spelled out as well.
Okay.
So the people voting would know the difference in cost between the two.
How many options will I have on that ballot? Two?
I think it was three, actually. The one, the overriding question was, do you support the imposition of the half cent or one cent sales tax to fund the creation of the courthouse? The second question was, do you support the P Ridge location and the associated costs? And then the third question would be the East Milton.
Well, the third one would be, no. If you didn't want any of that, as you worked your way through the ballot, on option A, do you want P Ridge at this price, at that penny, for this long? And you, no. And then East Milton, do you want the courthouse here, no price of land, this is the courthouse? No. And then that constructively is the third option, is that you don't want to fool with it.
What I am concerned is, it appears to me that there might be a little hanky panky going on in the way that it's going to be presented to the voters of this county. I would prefer to see, and I'm sure I've talked to a lot of people here lately, because this is the most I've been involved in quite some time, and some of this stuff, I'm talking to a lot of people every day. We pay you people to do a job. You're paid every month to do a job. Make a vote on where you're going to put this, because we pay you to do this. Put it on the ballot. Do you, will you vote for one cent sales tax, or whatever, for this piece of Holy Grail property on Highway 90? One thing on the ballot for us to vote on, and that is, do we approve of where you choose? Now, I'm, I wonder why that's hard. Why wouldn't that be the easy way for people to go in and vote, yes, I will vote for Highway 90? No, I don't like your choice, I will not vote for it. And the reason you're not going to put it on the ballot that way is because you're trying to throw some stuff in the game to where you'll confuse the people that vote on it. That's all the reason you're doing it. You know it, and I know it. Now, Mr. Cole, I'm still waiting on your motion to take the Highway 90 off of the ballot. Thank you, sir.
Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Hal Sherburne. I live in Pace, Florida. Santa Rosa County has a website. Am I not correct? I think I went on the internet and found a website.
Yes, sir, we do.
I don't know the legality of it, but is there any reason all of this information that's being presented, and has been presented in the last several months, cannot be included on that website? So when you do come for a voting period of time in November, people are informed.
Mr. Chairman.
It's nothing, you know, I don't know if this young lady would do it. I, like I say, I don't know what the legalities are. If you want to get some of these college students that can whip up a website quicker than snot, but the people would, I think, would appreciate knowing what's going on. And I mean, it doesn't have to be a long, in-depth thing, but just list the judicial place, and then you have your different conversations that drop down from there. It's just an idea to use that website.
Thank you very much. Just, Commissioner Cole first, and then Commissioner Salter. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Sir, we, several weeks ago, we initiated that, and the board directed staff to do just that. And if I could, please, I don't know, Mr. Walker, where were we at on that?
Say it again.
I was wondering where we were in the process of creating that page for the judicial center. Yeah, the, the, the two things, we are putting together the website. I don't know that it's, it's, it's fully operational yet, because obviously there seems to be considerable amounts changing. But the, the, all the material that, that the board's deliberated each, each meeting is on the archive backup for the agenda pieces, the process, each of the things to go through. So I'm just, I'm saying, we are going to put together a, a specific webpage for the judicial facility, including the timeline. There are a number of things that are already posted, so we are putting that together. And, and I agree, that would be, you know, that's how people get their information now.
Yeah, yeah, because part of the problem, I don't think a lot of people, you know, this could be put into the Santa Rosa Gazette, or whatever publications that are available to the people on television or whatever, on the radio, to direct them to that, instead of going to where they're going to have to read the long process of all the conversation that has happened and happened and talked and all that. But give us some information, as long as this seems to be the hottest topic, let's talk about the hottest topic, because what's going to happen next is the building itself, and how much money is going to be spent on that, that's already been brought up, the size of it, and that this property is only 1/30th of the cost of the new judicial center. And what's going to happen with the new courthouse and moving the records? Are we going to have an empty building over on this side to go into the new courthouse? Or is it area for the clerk of the court's going to stay over here? And areas like that, and what's going to happen? I know they spoke about the courthouse downtown, keeping it there. I took a tour myself through there the other day, just to see, and there's some issues I have, but it's not that bad. But security and safety for your lawyers and judges is an issue, and I know that back module area, but that could be replaced. But, you know, just give us some information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll take these last two speakers, and we're going to move on. I think we've covered this subject pretty well. Go ahead, Carl. Name and address, please, sir.
Carl Hudgens, 3412 Barkwood Drive in Pace, Florida. On the way in, when I was driving down Highway 90, and I finally got through all those red lights coming this way, I got to pick up a little speed, and then I realized, you know, if we had the courthouse here, I'd have to stop for another red light. So I appreciate right now our Highway 90, being able to drive a little bit on there. I actually got up to about 50 miles an hour there for, for three or four minutes. So you might know that I'm not happy about what potentially could happen with the traffic there on Highway 90. But there are other concerns that I have with, with this particular parcel. I don't think the access is good. You don't have access close to I-10. You don't have access from 87 North from Navarre, where a major center is. It's not close to the new connector that's going to connect all the people from the north end, which will be the 87 extension. So I know I'm doing comparison, I'm off of the, the only way we can, you can buy a piece of property, and this goes back to me buying lots to build homes on and for my, my family, it takes some time, and you consider all these things when you're, you're doing it. So I think we've got our cart before the horse on going ahead with this property and focusing on this one property, when it's kind of like... on this one property, when it's kind of like the father came home and he, the family said, well, we need a new house. So he comes home after work one day, said, oh, honey, on the way home, I bought a new house, and I'm going to need you to take a second job to pay for it. I don't think she, honey, would be too happy with that, so I'm not sure the taxpayers are going to be too happy with, well, we went down here, made this deal on Highway 90, and we've got 180,000 square foot building, and we want y'all to pay for it. You know, in the first case, it could be an almost divorce situation, and in the second case, it might be too, especially the way this was brought about. I've, I've, I've been here and asked questions about this, and one of the first questions I had was, when we, the meeting, I can't give you the date, the board was narrowing it down to a two-mile radius of Highway 90 and Avalon Boulevard. And I told the fellow sitting next to me, I said, it looks like they've already picked their parcel. There's probably only one or two parcels within that two-mile radius. I got up here and spoke for a broader radius. I asked you to go seven or eight miles and look a little further. But the, the motion passed, and I think the vote passed, that we're going to look within two-mile radius, and that's what we predicted we, the board directed staff to do. And then we did an RFP, which brought back six proposals, and I could have my, my numbers, my events a little not exactly in chronological order. But when we did those six RFPs, I don't think we considered any of our county lands that we already, we already own. You came back with six proposals from people wanting to sell us land, right? That's, that's what an RFP did. We didn't give it equal standing. We said, we're going to go with six RFPs. We didn't actually have an inventory of our lands and our, our possibilities that way. And then we started focusing on that. Well, let me go back just a little bit. So when we got into that two-mile radius, we kicked out the JDL property pretty quickly. And we started talking about a Coldwell Banker property, and I was confused right there. I didn't think Coldwell Banker owned a whole lot of property. I thought it was a real estate agent business. So we kept talking about the Coldwell Banker property, and so I came up and asked, I said, who, who are we really dealing with? Well, I was told we were dealing with Charter Bank. So, so we started calling it the Charter Bank property. And then, and I think we can chase these dates down, because I think some people might have known where we were going before, when I asked that question. And then it was, well, Charter Bank has got an engineer. I heard this on the radio by a commissioner, and I appreciate the information. He was upfront about it. Well, Charter Bank's got a, a developer or something involved, and we're talking to them. I said, okay, well, I just was at a meeting and I asked them who we were buying it from. They said Charter Bank. Okay, so then it was Mr. Brian Di Maria that came, his name came up. He's the developer. So we're buying half of this property. Charter Bank owns 45. We had a contract with Charter Bank or a binder, and now we're going to shift it to Mr. Di Maria. And I'm not sure why, but, you know, because we had a contract there. And then, on the 14th of this month, I guess it was about less than two weeks ago, then we had Mr. Di Maria formed an LLC called Milton Crossings. So then we had a proposal to, so you might see why the people might be getting a little confused, chased following this, I won't call it a shell game, but following this process. And one of my concerns, and I voiced it before, was a developer that owned land behind the, this property. What I'm saying is, the focus has always been on this property, not on what's the best property for Santa Rosa County citizens. So in this focus, we had HOK come in and show us beautiful drawings of nice courthouses all across the country, what we could do on this property, not on other property, on this property. And there are drawings, and we were going to put it on the back, and it's almost like the husband trying to sell her the, the house after he's already done, did the binder on it. Well, honey, this is really a fantastic situation. Okay, well, honey didn't get a choice in it. But now honey's here asking questions, and we hadn't bought the land yet, so maybe we can get back to asking. So then we did images, and we went ahead and did a binder on this one property. Not on all, any of the rest. We hadn't tied up JDL property. We not really serious about considering out the property that the Santa Rosa County taxpayers own out in East Milton, as far as I can tell. We're just focusing on this property. Then we get to the negotiation. Oh, we're going to be able to negotiate to get the best deal for the county taxpayers. Well, my confidence is not right now. I'm kind of playing the deal of, honey, my husband might have come back with not the best deal for me. He made them, the first offer he made them, they snapped up, and he made the offer, not them. He went to the, to find the piece of land, and he offered them $2.5 million, well, let me go back, $1.4 million for half of that land. So they snapped that up. Anytime I buy something and they took the best offer, my first offer, I go home with my head hanging pretty low, because I know I paid way too much for that piece of property. So with that in mind, now we're going to negotiate later with, for shared infrastructure, with our great success we've had with negotiating this price. We're going to negotiate the shared infrastructure later, subject to negotiation. And we might build them roads. We might build them an entrance there. We might put a red light where we don't need it on Highway 90. We might spend half a million dollars on turn lanes going in and out. But we're going to go back after we, they know we have to have these to build what we want, and we're going to ask them to help us pay for it, when they know we don't have any option but to put it in for them anyway. So I, I'm not sure where, this piece of property is not going a direction that I think might be best for the taxpayers, and I'm just looking at it from, you know, maybe trying to take the place of that housewife whose husband made such a fantastic deal. So the forum that we need to do, this is not the best forum, to pick the best piece of property to get the citizens behind. I've asked before, and I'll ask again. We need citizens, town hall type meetings in the evenings when people can come, multiple days. We did, we jumped through the public hearings hoop. We know there are hoops, state law hoops, that the board has to jump through, that's, we have to have public hearings on, but there's quick ways to do that. You do a quick advertisement and do it in the middle of the day when nobody can come, and you get it done, and you say, well, we have public, public hearings on it. Let's open this up to the people and consider all these, all of these pieces of property, especially the ones that we've had, that we already own and have paid for, or the ones that are given to us, 45 acres, just two miles east of our current property. It's comparable to the, what you're talking about over here, that we want to pay 1.4 million and do infrastructure on. You got one that's two miles east of the current location, that we'd have to do some infrastructure on that one, but it's offered to us for nothing. And then just a little further over, you can connect to the jail, which makes a lot of sense. So maybe the husband needs to do a little more asking about, well, you know, a family says, well, what schools are involved? The husband says, oh, I don't know where our kids will be going to school. I didn't think about that location, you know? Well, where's the future growth going to be? What's that neighborhood going to be like down the road? Oh, I don't know. It's, you know, that street didn't look too bad. Well, maybe we should check into some things like that, what might happen in the future. I've been there and done that, and there's a reason I know the mistakes that a husband can make, okay? And I've had to sell lots that I bought that I thought would be wonderful for me and my family, when my wife says, nah, that's not where we're going to be.
All right. I'd like to ask you to wrap it up now. You're making some good points, but we've got one more speaker, then we're going to have to take a break.
Okay. Well, just a quick, we're talking about property values will increase, and we said, well, somebody's got to make it, going to get property values increased around it. Well, I kind of like the idea of the county taxpayers' property increasing in value. So East Milton properties, county property, taxpayers surrounded by our interest, so let's, let's make the taxpayers rich. Instead of a developer that owns land behind, we might build them through there, and we might, and developer on one side, we might build them a road over there. I said earlier, it needs to pass the look test, it needs to look right, and now I'm telling you, it needs to pass the smell test, and right now, it's not smelling that good. It might be good, but it's not, it's just not smelling that good. So thanks for your time this morning.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Carl, in a previous meeting, didn't you say you own property at 87 and...
Say what?
Don't you own some property at Highway 87 in the ITN area?
No.
I thought you said you had some out there.
I've got land in East Milton, ITN, to live on one day. It's two miles east of where you're talking about. But I've got land in Pace, too, so it's, and you've got to live somewhere. As far as me, it doesn't matter, except I don't want to drive through Pace and be in all that traffic. And I want the best deal for the county taxpayers.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. This is our final speaker on this, and then we're going to take a break, and then we'll reconvene. If there's someone here that, after giving this some deeper thought, wants to make a comment, the public forum is available to you at the end of the meeting. Name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Brad Johnson, 5664 Heatherton Road, Milton, Florida. I wanted to speak just briefly. I am thankful that the commission is actually looking at putting a new courthouse. As some of you know, I know Mr. Salter does, that I'm third-generation attorney practicing here in Santa Rosa County. I do not own property downtown. My father, T-Saw, did own some property, but it belongs to my mother. Half of it, the other half is owned by Paul Green. I don't have an interest, because ain't neither one of them going to give me that property. I have an interest in seeing downtown continue and flourish, and so I like that we've opened it back up a little bit. We're looking at East Milton. I'd like the county commission to consider looking a little further. This has not been a new problem. When I first started practicing law 14 years ago, there was actually proposals out, and there was a new courthouse, and it was put on the ballot not long after I began, began practicing. There was a one-cent sales tax. Now, I've heard people say, well, the county, the people rejected that. No, they rejected the overreaching and the greed that the county commission put by tacking on all of these sales taxes at the time. That's a different commission, different group of individuals. I think there may be one continuing commissioner from that time. But at that time, if you look at it, there were a number of other sales taxes that were, or, or projects that were tied to it, particularly roads, and a number of them. So I don't think the county really has had a chance to say, one cent sales tax, or half a cent sales tax, or whatever it is tied to one particular project. They got, you know, just dumped on, and they said, you know what? We're not voting for any of it. I think that was wise on the part of the, the taxpayers at the time. I think we need a new courthouse. Honestly, the county commission, something has to be done sooner or later, because quite frankly, the situation as it currently exists is going to result sooner or later, and there are going to be some more liability. I know there's already been one suit filed for some personal injury action, but the first time you have some prisoner that gets a hold of somebody because, for whatever reason, because they're walking right down the hallways next to everybody else on their way to the courtroom, you're going to end up paying more than it costs you to build a new courthouse. So you, we've got to have a new courthouse. Financially, it may, just makes sense. Like I said, I'm in support of putting it where it currently is located. There's a plan in place to do that. There's a, there is a plan that was already paid for, approved. Sure, would it have to be reconsidered? But I'm pretty sure it would be cheaper than paying for drawings on two separate pieces of property, that neither one of which has been decided on by the county yet, as, as we stand here. I mean, we're, at this point, it looks like we're throwing money around, trying to put different proposals and plans. I'm assuming if we're going to have a plan for Highway 90 property, we're going to have a plan for East Milton as well, and we're going to have to pay for both of those separately to design properties that will fit both of them. I will say, the previous gentleman made some very good points. I also would like to mention that Mr. Sam, what was your last name?
Mr. Mullins.
Mr. Mullins, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember it. Mr. Bullins made some excellent points. Quite frankly, it sounds like there was not nearly enough questions made or posed or determined by the county commission, when we had already decided at one point on one piece of property that was going to be the only property on the ballot, and yet we had not looked at all of these issues that, quite frankly, nobody's been able to answer, and they were, I think some of the commissioners said, you know, those are valid points, we need to consider those. Lastly, I, I would like to mention that I think it's very important, you know, a lot of times, I, I've heard this complaint, well, why haven't people been involved? Have we been doing this for the last year? Well, honestly, you do it in the middle of the day. The majority of your taxpayers work. They're the ones who pay for this, and they don't, and they can't take days off repeatedly to come down here and speak to you during the middle of the working day. Evening workshops, making them prior notice, putting them out, publicizing them, getting them out, I think that's important. You know, I think Bob, Mr. Cole indicated that he, you know, he seems is very democratic about wanting to get the input of the people, because that's who is represented by the county commissioners. I think that's commendable. I think we need to do a better job of trying to do that, and, and going out and making it easier for them to put their, give their input. You know, they're not paid to come up here and spend their time and talk to you. They want to be involved, but they got to pay their bills, and they got to pay their taxes, and they've got to pay for you gentlemen. So I, I think it's important that we try and make it accessible for them to be able to be here. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. We're going to take 10 minutes. Let's see, that'll make, let's make it four till, please. Be back in your seats.
(inaudible)
Will you please begin to make your way to your seats?
I had one comment I wanted to make, and I'm sorry the crowd is dispersed, but a comment was made about Economic Development Committee being blank, and I, I made myself a note, so that when we finished the item that we were discussing, I could come back to that issue. Because you see nothing in the Economic Development Committee, that means there's nothing that we can reveal or talk about. There's quite a bit of activity going on in the economic development arena as we speak, and I'm sure you can understand that commissioners jumping in and, and turning on a mic and talking about it could possibly ruin the deal. So, there's, there's nothing to report, there's no information that's public. Please don't misunderstand, when you see blank, economic development, that doesn't mean that there's nothing going on. So, having said that, we have, I don't think we formally disposed of item number two. We're gonna continue the discussion. Do we just move this to the next set of meetings? We're gonna have quite a bit more to do with it. You're looking at me with a puzzled look. Is that contrary to your understanding?
I don't know, we've decided to move it to the next meeting. We could make a decision today. I mean, that, you know, we started this process back, it started long ago, but we had the discussion over general geographic location of the courthouse back in the summer of last year, and we went through this, and we went through this, and we decided on that geographic location, based on studies that were done showing the population center of the county, and the geographic center of the county, and travel time studies. And then we put out the RFP. We had six responses. Those were narrowed down to the site in P. Ridge. In response to requests and discussion from the public, we decided to give the voters two choices. The choice in P. Ridge, or a choice in East Milton. And that seemed acceptable when we made that decision a few weeks ago. And then something changed, and now, the, the speakers that we hear from wanna take that decision out of the hands of the voters, and just have one choice on the ballot in East Milton.
Are you, are you gonna make us a motion to?
Well, I'm discussing.
Okay.
And I just don't know how we got from, okay, we've centered on, we've, we've chosen the geographic location, we've narrowed it down to a piece of property. We're not gonna make the decision ultimately, anyway. The voters are, regardless of where it goes. What is wrong with giving the voters a choice of a property in P. Ridge, or a property in East Milton? Because I've spoken with a lot of people who do not like the East Milton location. They want it in a more centrally located area in the county. Easy access from Gulf Breeze, easy access from Pace.
So, is that, you're gonna make a motion that, that we dispose of this issue? This is, this is an agenda, and we've gotta do something with it.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with Commissioner Lynchard. I think it's time to recommend non-binding real property purchase agreement with Milton Crossings LLC for approximately twenty-two acre partial on US ninety for a proposed judicial facility.
Is that without objection?
That's a motion without objection.
I object, so that we have another vote.
Maybe I misunderstood a word. Did you say non-binding?
Non-binding contract.
Let me just clarify that. It is a binding contract, in that it lays out terms of how much it is, who pays closing costs, that kind of thing. And if we proceed past November the twenty-first, it would, it's certainly binding. There, it just has out provisions where we, for any reason, until November twenty-first, may withdraw, may receive our money back for any reason at all. But it is certainly a contract. So, so I, I would suggest that we not use the word "non-binding."
Mr. Chairman, I would change my motion.
Absolutely, go ahead, sir.
Recommend a real property purchase agreement with Milton Crossings LLC for approximately twenty-two acre partial on US ninety for a proposed judicial facility, without objection.
Yes, and I object.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna support this, but I want clarification, and I want the public to make sure they're aware of, of this. When we go into this, and then we have an appraisal done, we're at a one-hundred percent, we're able to counteroffer this price. In no way, I've heard a lot of people out there say, well, you bought it. You're, you're gonna buy it. You've bought it for a million four, or whatever it is. We have not. This contract would simply allow us to do due diligence. It's just like if I, you come to my shop, and I'm asking three thousand bucks for a car, you take it out and have it looked at, and come back and say, I'll give you two thousand for it. We have opened the option to negotiate on this piece of property. Am I correct, or am I not correct?
Correct. We, there's an awful lot of due diligence to be done. There's a survey, there's a title search, there are environmental studies, and there is an appraisal. If any element of any of those things is not acceptable to you, then you have the option to withdraw from the contract, or look back to the seller and say, you gotta do better.
Okay. That's what I want clear. Just like we've been told by Carl and several other people, that, you know, we, we should be able to, you know, negotiate this. I think I heard that several times. You know, Carl said, Carl said, hey, I'm the husband that went and bought it at cost, and then I felt bad afterwards. We're not gonna be the person that buys it at, at the face value or at the cost. We're, we're simply opening a path of negotiation. If that price isn't where it should be, then, then we should certainly counteroffer, because that's our job, to protect and do the best job we can for the citizens of Santa Rosa County, on, on, and cost included. I like the idea that I heard several people say about the value of the infrastructure that we would consider putting on there versus the value that developer's gonna get out of the balance of the property. We need to leverage that on the final cost. And finally, you know, there's a lot of people that says, this thing just sprung up. It just swooped in. There's a email that we received from the county administrator to all the board, it's public record, on February seventh, that Mr. Demira, Demara, was now, you know, gonna be the developer on a property. So, you know, just some things for clarification. I'm willing to support this with one caveat, that we also schedule a Thursday night meeting, open to the public, about the total discussion of this. I, I think we ought to move forward today. I think that's one choice. We've all been told up here, you guys need to do your job. We did our job. We, we finally selected a piece of property on Highway ninety, and then again, doing our job, we heard from the citizens that said, East Milton. I thank you for that. We haven't, I haven't heard from you in, in the eight years I've tried to do that, but thank you for, you know, when I went to the Tea Party, they said they'd get behind that. So, thank you for that. I appreciate that, and I'll continue to support East Milton. But now, we've given the citizens just what this country's been built on. The right to vote, the right to make a decision, the right to make a choice. I'd like to continue that. I'd like to go ahead and move this forward today, so we can talk about that, and then we can continue discussions with East Milton.
In order to do that, you're gonna need to second the motion.
I'm seconding the motion.
All right.
With the caveat, with the caveat that we do a Thursday night meeting. If Commissioner Salter would agree to that?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to tie that into the motion, but I think we all understand.
I think.
We're gonna move forward with that.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second. We're gonna, we've, we've had, we'll have more opportunity at the end of the meeting for public input, but we're gonna move on this item. Yes, sir, but keep your comments concise, concise, and brief, please, sir. And we're not gonna take any others, so just might as well wait, unless you wanna wait for the public forum.
Real, real quickly, you were saying that you didn't understand, 'cause, you know, where this was coming from, and I wanted to explain to you where it's coming from. Because just as Carl explained, we thought all along, when he talked about Caldwell Banker, then he was corrected and said Charter Bank, and y'all contended to talk about Charter Bank. Then all of a sudden, we find out, since February, that this LLC, Milton, what, Milton Crossroads, is that the name of it?
Milton Cross.
Milton Crossings? Okay, see, I mean, this is, yesterday was the first we heard of this, and there was even a contention between some of the commissioners on the board at the meeting Monday, that some of y'all said, this is the first they had heard about it, and one of the commissioners turned to the other two, two of the commissioners on the board and said, asked them, said, did you know about this? One of them said no, and the other one kinda shrugged his shoulders. So, I mean, this is where the questions are coming into the public, because we're looking at what's going on, and we're, you know, it, it puts questions in our minds. And as citizens who are trying to, and we want, we appreciate the commissioners giving us a chance to vote on a property, but we want everything to be up and above board, and we want all the information put out there, so the citizens can make an educated vote on what they want. And that's all, you know, I just wanted to let you know, that's where it's coming from.
All right, thank you. The questions, questions have been called. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of moving this discussion of real property purchase agreement with Milton Crossings LLC for approval of twenty-two acre parcel on US Highway ninety for proposed judicial facility, and the motion was made, and the motion was second.
Mr. Chairman, county attorneys.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just wanna be sure, the motion was to approve the contract, was it not Commissioner Salter?
Yes, all right. The motion is, I stand corrected. The motion from Commissioner Salter was to approve the contract. That motion was seconded by Commissioner Cole, objected to by Commissioner Melvin. The questions have been called. All in favor, would you please raise your right hand? Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
This time, I'd like to make a motion that staff, we've been talking about standing up a webpage for, for this particular item, or a page within our own website. I'd like to see us immediately, because a comment was made about having to try to go through things and find it. We should be able to go to that webpage, and, and it's gonna be a work in progress, and maybe I can get some help with this, if I'm saying anything's wrong. But basically, I, I think there ought to be an icon on there, that any email, anything we got on public record for pertaining to, if it, if it says courthouse in it pertaining to the current issue of the courthouse, you should have an icon to go, go to that page, go to an icon, click on it, and it'll just give you a, a list of them, so the general public doesn't have to go down through emails, or day-by-day, and pick things out. I, I don't think that'd be hard to do with the great computer department we have. You know, I, I just feel like I'd make, make it easier and take some of the questions.
All right. Administrative Committee, item number three.
Mr. Chairman, that was a motion.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Wait a minute. We've already had a, a motion and closed down an item. Now, did you add something to the agenda?
Well, I, I guess I did. I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I asked to make a motion to, that staff does that. We've heard a lot from folks, and we've talked about getting this page up and going, but it, it seems to be taking a while, so I, I just, I, I think it'd just make it easier.
I don't think it needs a motion. The, the staff has, is working that, that issue. Much of the material is already there. It may not all be there. I know the material that, that we specifically instructed them Monday to provide us pertaining to the location of the utilities, et cetera. They haven't had time to respond to that.
If it doesn't need a motion, just as long as public becomes aware that there's a simple way to get to this issue.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Continuing, the Administrative Committee, item number three. Recommend a request for proposal format for solid waste collection franchise area or areas north of East River in Santa Rosa County to include the following. A menu of services including garbage collection, curbside recycling, debris and large item collection. Franchise area options to include, one, the entire North County excluding municipalities and military installations at one price, or two, tiered pricing for urban rural areas with north-south boundary from County Road 182. And three, provisions for grandfathering existing permitted haulers with fewer than 400 customers and operating with vehicles of less than 26,000 pounds of gross vehicle weight. And that option there will protect our existing mom-and-pop hauler, the J&amp;L. And I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number four is recommend three amendments to the human resource policies as recommended by the Human Resource Director. I'll open that for discussion. Mr. Chairman, I believe you had asked that that, there's, I think, one or two of those items that you had asked us to go back and look at, and I neglected to pull it off the agenda since the board had left it there, but we can bring that back. Okay. So you, go ahead and pull item number four at this time? If, unless, if you're not comfortable moving. I am, I am not for the record, for the public. I raised a question in private with the county administrator about one of the provisions and asking him to take a look at it. And he agreed with my question and is going to bring back some more material. So we'll see this again in the near future, but item four has been pulled. Item five is recommend the use of Williams Lake Road for a 10K run benefiting the historic Coon Hill Cemetery Saturday, May 24th, 2014, beginning at 8:00 AM. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number six is recommend purchasing Cisco Blade server system with required operating software from Presidio Networked Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $40,574.80 based on comparison shopping for data collection and storage redundancy. Details in the backup. I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number seven is recommend assignment of Gulf Power Company lighting services contract from Florida Department of Transportation for US 98 street lighting projects phase one, two, and three, and authorized execution of all related documents we discussed this Monday. This will basically set up a pass-through so that our costs are reimbursed for this lighting. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number eight is recommend cancellation of maintenance agreement with Tyboron Incorporated for the computer rated dispatch system for emergency communication center effective March the 31st, 2014, as recommended by the Emergency Management Director. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number nine, our meetings, unless otherwise noted, the meetings below will be held in the boardroom of Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. They are there for your review. If you're at home and can't see what we're looking at, it's posted on the internet, same place you're watching this movie, this meeting. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number 10 is an add-on by Mr. Walker.
Be glad to. Mr. Chairman, if I could note on the commission regular meeting, April 10th, that is the, that's the meeting, regular meeting that's scheduled and it's on here for the Tiger Point Community Center, but that will be, gosh, the first meeting in a long time that we've not been in here, so.
Good point, and that does, we're mentioning again.
And we probably need specifically to beef up our public information piece on that notification because it's going to be out, the Monday meeting will be here, but the Thursday meeting will be at Tiger Point.
Thank you very much. We probably need to remember to mention that as we go in all our meetings up until that point so that we maximize the public's exposure to that. And that concludes the Administrative Committee. Next is Engineers' Report.
Mr. Chairman, I did have the one, the HOK proposal is, it essentially cost about $5,000 per site for us to evaluate or ask HOK in Hatch Mount McDonald to fully evaluate the sites as we go through that process to make sure that the issues that Mr. Mullins had mentioned, the ponds, the parking, the building, all that can be, and the infrastructure can be properly costed out. If we do, I'd like, I'd like for authorization for a proposal of up to $30,000 if we do the six sites in East Milton. There have been six that have been proposed. I think with, there are only going to be four that we will actually need them to do with. So if you can make it not to exceed $30,000, but we'll do less if we can.
Okay. We really need to have our utilities report back so that we know which sites we're referring them to. We certainly don't want them looking at sites that don't have that infrastructure in East Milton. Regarding the East Milton sites, we want to be sure we don't spend money on something that is not serviced by utilities.
I'd agree.
Up to $30,000 is recommended. So item number 10 is to authorize HOK to expend up to $30,000 based on a $5,000 per site evaluation of the East Milton properties. That would include, should I, I suppose if Mr. Clary came on line, that would include that site as well.
I believe the sites that you had mentioned Monday were the Clary, Mr. Byram's property, the site just north of the courthouse and, courthouse, north of the jail.
Yeah.
And there was, and maybe the Jeff 8 Road. I believe they were, they were the ones that y'all had mentioned. So I don't think it'll be but the four, but.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Salter.
In your comment, you said $30,000 for East Milton site evaluations. That would be...
For these sites in that area, for the rural area sites.
Wouldn't that also include the Highway 90 site?
It's already been done.
It's already been evaluated. Yeah, Highway 90 has been evaluated. And my follow-on comment was that we didn't want to spend money evaluating East Milton site that did not have the utilities available. So that we wouldn't be wasting money. Okay. So I'll move that for approval without objection. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Yeah. Good morning, Romy White. I'm here on behalf of Navarre Press.
Address, too.
5775 Orin Arlene in Milton. At Monday's meeting, I brought up that the county staff had presented four options in East Milton. The county has, as far as I have totaled up, around 1,100 acres out there. And so I was wondering, you know, it had been deferred until two weeks from now, so I'm wondering why this has been added on by Mr. Walker today for just the four sites out there when Mr. Blalock had said that, you know, nothing else had been ruled out. So have we ruled out other county-owned sites in East Milton?
All I need to do, I've got to, I've got to purchase engineering services at $5,000 a site. The sites that the board mentioned specifically Monday were the four that I outlined. So, I mean, we have a number, in other words, we have, there are a number of sites out there that, these would be the ones that would be the cheapest and the most convenient in my expectation.
Okay, can I get, can I get some documentation that shows that those would be the cheapest and the most convenient out of the 1,100 acres?
I don't have all of them evaluated. We don't have the staff to evaluate the whole 1,100 acres.
That's right.
What I had said, and it may be seen, same thing you're seeing in a different manner. I have asked that, and the board, the board has asked, instructed the staff to show us where the infrastructure is. We're not going to consider property that's not served by infrastructure. I had no idea, one, that we had 1,100 acres, but having said that, we're looking at things proximate to the jail and the prison area and we're going to be sure that we have infrastructure in the, you know, in the immediate area before we proceed to spend $5,000 to evaluate the site.
Thank you, sir. That's just, I'm asking the four review commissioners if you will just not go with what staff has provided so far, but look a little further deeper before we get into detailed studies that we're paying money for on, you know, just narrowing it down to four sites without, like he said, there's not backup documentation to show how they're cheaper or more convenient. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Okay. That concludes Administrative Engineers' Report. Just like, is there anything that you have? Yes, ma'am.
Will the Byram property be in one of those studies? Because we already know he's offered it.
Yes, ma'am. It will be included provided it makes the cut, the caveat that I added, that it's near the facilities, infrastructure.
Thank you.
If it has proper facilities. Okay. Next is Public Service, Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, recommend subordination of mortgage for home substantial rehabilitation program loan for the property located at 4381 Pine Villa Circle, consistent with board policy. I move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item two, recommend subordination of mortgage for HHRP project for the property located at 4149 Highland Boulevard, consistent with board policy. I move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three, recommend loan modification agreement HHRP project for property located at 6985 Martin Road, allowing monthly payment of $100, pending sale of property. I move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And item four is recommend resolutions authorizing application of submission of seven Florida Department of Transportation alternative program grant applications for seven sidewalk projects and authorize execution of relevant documents. I move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
That concludes Public Services.
Public Works Committee, we have no items, so we move to Budget Finance, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Item number one is recommend bid in the amount of $41,014 from Metro LE Scales for a steel deck truck scale at the Central Landfill as low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item two is recommend bid in the amount of $23,686.14 from Pinnacle Wireless Incorporated for communications tower and building grounding project at the South End Tower as low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three is recommend budget amendment 2014-100 in the amount of $20,000 carrying forward funds for tree mitigation revenues in the general fund. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item number four is recommend budget amendment 2014-101 in the amount of $6,604 transferring funds from the capital fund to the general fund to purchase an ATV for Navarre Beach. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item five is recommend budget amendment 2014-102 in the amount of $303,540 recognizing tourist development council funds for reconstruction of Baghdad Mill Site in the District Two Projects Fund. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item six is budget, recommend budget amendment 2014-103 in the amount of $66,920 recognizing the 2012, 2013 recreational trails program grant and match from TDC North End Committee Reserves for trail construction and facilities within the Baghdad Mill Site Park in the District Two Project Funds. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item seven, recommend budget amendment 2014-104 in the amount of $5,5,600 to recognize donations from the Baghdad Waterfront Partnership Incorporated and the Blackwater Pirates for expenditure and improvements to the Blackwater, or to the Baghdad Mill Site Park in District Two Project Funds. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item eight, recommend budget amendment 2014-105 in the amount of $1,151 for the electronic security system at Veterans Memorial Park from District Three Recreation Reserves. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And the final item is recommend county expenditures and check register and it's, I give it to staff to turn over to the chairman. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
That concludes this report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. County Administrator?
No.
County Attorney?
Mr. Attorney.
Public Forum, anybody in the public wishing to address this board?
Carl Hutchins, 3412 Barkwood Drive, Pace. I have a question going back to the contract with the board, I think approved to be transferred from Charter Bank to Milton Crossings. Is that what happened? Or was it with Mr. Di Maria to chart to Milton Crossings?
The motion was to enter into the contract between Santa Rosa County and Milton Crossings LLC.
Are the terms the same as the Charter Bank agreement was exactly? Other than, obviously, it's a different person.
Well, into those items that were not addressed, the RFP lays out a concept. The contract lays out all the specifics of that, but it is exactly in keeping with the Charter Bank proposal.
So we had the RFP agreement, more or less, with Charter Bank. But now we have a sales agreement with Milton Crossings. And we never had a, just an agreement with the individual, Brian Di Maria. Okay. In this agreement that, I wanted to ask this question earlier before the question was called, but the questions were cut off, so I didn't get a chance. I had understood earlier that Santa Rosa County or the Board of Commissioners can withdraw for any reason before November 21st. Can they withdraw for no reason without giving a reason?
All they've got to do, according to the contract, if they decide that this is unacceptable or unfeasible, which I think that covers about anything. If they just don't want to do it, they may withdraw.
We don't have to cite anything in the contract?
No, sir.
I feel a little better about it. I still am worried about the look and the smell of the whole deal, but that does make me feel a little better. And we need to do due diligence before November 21st. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else to address the board? We are adjourned.